We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, February 19th, 2024 and a quarter. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let's stand together as our county attorney, Mr. Ari Grady, will lead us in prayer, and I ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
To open the Bible, Lord, and just read a few lines offer such consolation. The message may not be advice or command or an action. It is just rewarding to know you are not silent. You have words to speak. We simply need to take the time, open the book, and listen. If we open our hearts and listen intently, we can hear your love behind every word. We sense your presence, and it is enough for us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you write that prayer?
Intended.
Good morning to each of you, and we welcome you here to the Board of Commissioners meeting, which is your meeting, and to those that may be viewing online, we also welcome you this morning. For those of us in attendance, I would ask that we would check our cell phones if we could to make sure they are silenced. We would appreciate it. Commissioners, you have before you agenda packets. Are there any agenda items that you desire to pull or items that you desire to add this morning?
Move to approve.
Make a motion to approve agenda research.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Here and none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Commissioners, citizens, we have a long agenda today. We got a lot of good information to present to each of us, and we look forward to each presentation. I'm going to defer to Commissioner Mitchell to introduce our first guest for item one.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners, citizens, I'd like to introduce Captain Jim Belmont and Captain Randy Bertie. They are the executive, our commanding officer and executive officer of Fleet Readiness Center East. Skipper Belmont has been there about three years, and Captain Bertie will be taking over as commanding officer in September. For people who are not familiar with it, Fleet Readiness Center East is the largest industrial complex in North Carolina. It is the biggest employer east of 95. It is a depot-level maintenance. It is what keeps our warbirds flying, and it is extremely important both to the defense of our country and to our North Carolina economy. So, gentlemen, thank you for coming today.
Good morning.
Thank you, good morning. So, as Commissioner Mitchell said, my name is Captain Jim Belmont. I'm the commanding officer at Fleet Readiness Center East onboard Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point. The reason why I'm here today is just kind of to give a quick high level of what we do and who we are. Couple times a year, we have new hires come in, and the first question I always ask them is, you know, show a raise of hands, how many people know what the Marine Corps Air Station is? So, get about 90% of the hands raised. I ask the second question then, how many people know what Fleet Readiness Center East is? And probably get about 50%. And so, that's good. Now, how many people know exactly what we do? And maybe most of the hands drop. So, this is just kind of a high level of who we are, what we do, and what we bring to the counties. So, next slide. So, our structure, just a quick overview. So, commanding officer, like Commissioner Mitchell said, got here in April of 2021. Started off as the executive officer, did that for a year, and then what we call fleeted up to the commanding officer. Captain Randy Bertie is my executive officer. He got here in September of '21, and then in September of this year, we will do our change of command, and he will take over. As you see, our executive director, Mr. Mark Mino, he's kind of our staple. He has been with the company or with Fleet Readiness Center East for over 30 years now. He started up in the ranks as a engineer and has now made his way all the way up to executive director. He says he'll be there for about another five years, which is good, but any day he could say that he's tired and want to go home. But he's pretty much a staple. And then you see at the bottom, there are 10 departments that we have underneath us that run everything from our operations to our support. We have a legal counsel, our comptroller, which is our budgeting folks, and our fleet support team, which is about half of our folks that are the smart folks. They can go out at any minute's notice. We give them about 48 hours, but they could get called up to go to the corners of the world to help either aircraft or engineers support the fleet and have a bag and are ready to go. Any questions on our structure? Okay, next slide. So, our numbers, these are just rough numbers, but we're almost 4,300 employees currently right now with an average salary of $72,000. Now, why do we say that? Why is that important? The average salary outside the gates is about $40,000. We are close now to about $75,000 for our average employee. So, we always have a desire for those people outside the gate to put resumes in. Again, with 4,300 jobs, we turn over about 6%, 6% to 8% a year. So, we get close to about 350, 350 jobs a year that we need to fill. So, we're always looking for employees, and this is why we wanted to get kind of what we do out there, because once you get further and further outside the gate into the counties, they really don't understand exactly what we do. But with 4,300 positions, there are jobs from tool room attendant all the way up to executive director, always needing help. We are a billion-dollar industry, so we bring in about $1 billion of revenue a year of the work that we do. Now, that sounds like a big number, but it costs us $1 billion a year to work, to do what we do. So, we're a zero-sum game. We don't try to make a profit. Any amount that we make extra, within two years, then we lower our rates. So, it's a good deal to the taxpayer. We, I think, are the lowest in the Navy when it comes to rates on the depot, and we are definitely in the Department of Defense. So, we are getting more and more work coming in on a yearly basis. 4 million direct labor hours of work right now, that equates to the billion dollars of work. We think with the work coming in within the next five to seven years, about an extra million work hours. So, you're looking at another probably 200 million on top of that billion in revenue and an extra million work hours. That also equates to more people. We are thinking we'll need about 1,000 more people within the next five to seven years in our workforce. So, we are now going out to the middle schools to start to recruit. Now, take a minute to think about that. Recruiting at the middle schools, why would you do that? Well, in five to seven years, that's our workforce. So, the hope is, and myself and the XO have been kind of told in this, is that high school graduation, a high school student that doesn't really want to go to college because they either can't afford it or just don't want to, will walk across the stage, will grab the high school diploma from their faculty, and then will grab a job offer from us. So, very interesting. Our workload, so this says, these are, again, rough numbers, but in last year, we did 68 aircraft that was leaving the facility, over 85 engines, and it says 11,000 components, but I think we hit about 12,400 and some components. That's the work coming in and work going out. We work on nine different type model series aircraft, from one of the older ones, the AV-8 Harrier, to now their newest one, the F-35 Lightning. In between, other aircraft, the F-18, the V-22, 853, H-1, C-130. I know these are just numbers, but a lot of different aircraft that we work on right now. The engines associated with those aircraft and also the components. Components could be anywhere from the rug radios that we put in to fuel control systems, different things that support these aircraft. These are not only Marine Corps aircraft, not only Navy aircraft, but also Air Force and Army aircraft that we're working on as well. Any questions on the workload? Okay, next slide. So, our footprint. So, if you see the runway right there, that's the Cherry Point. Below the circle, that's our current footprint. We have 119 buildings. That's the good news. The bad news is, is most of them averages about 60-year-old, and the ones that we work at are, were built in the 1940s. That area to the other end of the runway where that circle is, that's where our new build is. So, we've got a couple of buildings over there right now, but we're working with the state of North Carolina to see if we can get a billion-dollar appropriation to help us with late-to-need Milcon to build complex on that other side of the runway. It'll take all of the buildings that we have and slowly move them over and get them ready to work on fifth and sixth-generation aircraft rather than the 1940s aircraft that it was built for. We have over 2 million square feet. 1.6 million of that is actually production. The other is support warehouses, things like that. And like I said, the average age of our facilities on base is 60 years old. We have six Milcon projects that we're waiting on right now for Congress to approve. There's somewhere appropriations. We're slowly getting those, so we currently have $250 million Milcon that we're going to be starting here to build new F-35 hangars. Right now, we have space for nine F-35s. The requirement right now is for 25. We just don't have that space. So, we're temporarily going to have six spaces in one of our hangars, and then when we build building 993, which is on the other side of the runway, that's 20 F-35s. There's appropriation or Milcon that we're waiting on for another 20 spaces. So, eventually by 2028, we will have over 50 spots for F-35 work. That also comes with employees. That also comes with the money to fix those. So, a lot of growth within the next five years at Fleet Readiness Center East. Next slide. Our capabilities, this is pretty long, but I mentioned some of these aircraft that we work on, the engines to support those aircraft, the components that go on those aircraft, and then that bottom part, the different things that we do. So, we have additive manufacturing, 3D printing. We have five access machines to help mill things. We do non-destructive inspections, so it's x-raying the aircraft, so we don't want to take them apart to see if the structures are still well. We do welding, material analysis, and then we do some tube bending and inspection. So, a lot of different things that we have in our areas and that we're capable of doing. We also have a lot of smart chemists that do. So, just recently, there was an incident with the V-22 in Japan. Our engineers are looking to try and figure out what caused that incident to then put that out to the fleet to make sure that that doesn't happen again. We've done that to aircraft that were in California that had an incident, out in Norway about a year and a half ago. Some very, very smart folks that go out there and can look at a component and say exactly what happened to it, so that they either have to remanufacture that or refind out if the materials that were used for that component were faulty. Next slide. Our future workload, so this is kind of one of the big things. So, I didn't want to do public math, but if you add all those numbers up of up to the labor hours, you're pretty close to a million extra labor hours. There's some other things involved in that to get it over that. But C-130 work we'll be bringing in, so that the, our other service was trying to make room for their F-35s. So, up to 11 C-130s a year at about $25 million coming in for that workload. H-60 is an Air Force, so they're coming to us because of the work that we did with their H-1s. That's another about 20 million a year coming in. The 130 Grey Wolf is another Air Force. That's going to replace the Huey. That's about, I think, 8 to 10 million a year coming in, and then more F-35 work that we're getting in the future, another 10 to 15 million dollars. So, why am I giving these numbers? Why is this important? Because with that money that comes in, that's money going back into the communities, and that's also workforce coming in and helping out with that. Probably at that time will be about a $500 million salary that we're paying our employees to work that's going back out into the communities. Next slide. This is just kind of showing our partners that we work with. So, not only top right, you see all the colleges that we work with. Bottom left, the different government communities we work with. Top left is our different industries, and then all the different commands that we work with down in the bottom right. So, a lot of work that we're working with, a lot of people that we have. We are not just 4,300 people strong, we are all these people as well. Next slide. And then this is the partnership outside the gates. So, a couple of big ones, Lockheed Martin, Northrop Grumman, and then you see kind of, but that's where they bring us work. They ask us to work on either components or things like that, but bringing in about $70 million from our outside workforce. And I think last slide. Any questions?
Questions from the board.
I have one. Skipper, are you still working on presidential aircraft?
So, we are. So, we do three presidential V-22s a year that come through, and I want to say one, two, I want to say it's probably three of the H-1s that we work on presidential, and then the VH-92, which is the large one that you see land on the White House lawn, we work on those engines as well as the components. So, future workload, that's pretty much earmarked that we're going to be doing that until the VH-92, which is the presidential Hilo Marine One, which they're looking on a replacement for that, and we're in the mix to help work that workload once that comes in.
Here's the plot synopsis.
$72,000 average salary, that for a farmer, that sounds pretty good. I don't know, I might need to go ahead and apply.
So, it's interesting. We bring, we had over 17,000 students and 300 faculty come through last year, and I think every single faculty member was like, where do we sign up? Because, you know, the school systems just don't pay the teachers as much as they could. But students don't realize what those numbers mean quite yet, and that's the hard part is trying to tell them. But that's kind of the people that we're going for, is the farmers, the students that maybe don't have the money to go to school or have been tinkering with their parents' tractor all their lives to come in and say, hey, you've been working on tractors, how about billion-dollar aircraft? And that's kind of the excitement that we're starting to get.
Good. Any additional questions?
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Great presentation. This morning, also, we're honored to have with us representation from Allies for Cherry Points Tomorrow. We have Havelock Mayor Will Lewis. Also, we have Mr. Mark Vinlayson, Ms. Tyler Harris, and there may be others, but we want to welcome all of you and appreciate you taking the time to be with us this morning. Before we invite you to the podium, Mayor Lewis, as this Board of Commissioners know, Commissioner Mitchell serves as this Board's representative on ACT, and due to legislation passed in North Carolina General Assembly in December of 2021, this law prohibits public officials who also serve as directors, officers, or governing board members of nonprofit organizations from participating in making or administering any contracts between those nonprofits and public entities they serve. The session law is 2021-191, Section 14-234.3, also known as Senate Bill 473. Having said that, under the advisement of our attorney, Mr. Ari Grady, and the practice of this Board of Commissioners, we need a motion this morning and a second for this Board to vote to recuse Commissioner Mitchell from discussion and any potential vote that this Board may render today. Would I have that motion?
So moved. I agree.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Now, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Just reviewing my notes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
I assume I call Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Commissioner Mitchell, we will have somebody to get you in a few minutes. I'll let the record show that at 8:49 a.m., that Commissioner Mitchell departed from our boardroom. And at this time, we'll invite Mayor Lewis and any others that want to come forward. We welcome you this morning. Good to see you, sir.
Hey, Will.
Good morning.
Hold that microphone.
This way?
Yeah.
Okay. I get a little bit loud. I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, thank you for having us. Glad to hear today, talk about ACT. I am the mayor of Havelock, but I'm also the president of Allies for Cherry Points Tomorrow. It's not because I'm mayor of Havelock. The Board chooses every year who they want to be president. I happen to be president now. I have been for a little while, and I'm proud to do so, because we've got a lot of work going on, and we've had a lot of changes. And so, we've got some quick, simple slides to talk about how ACT has grown and developed over the last few years, the last two years really, and kind of what the future looks like for Allies for Cherry Points Tomorrow. So, first, the big thing is, we used to be a 501(c)(4), which was a governing, which was a government advocacy-type nonprofit, and about a year ago, two years ago, we started the process of changing into a 501(c)(3). And there are a lot of reasons for that that I won't bore you with all of them, but certainly as a (c)(4), there were a lot of challenges to fundraising. There were a lot of challenges to gifting ourselves and the community, and we stepped away from that and became an official (c)(3) as of September '22. We got our letter from the IRS, which it takes about 18 months to do that. That's about how long it took us. So, now, all donations to ACT are truly tax-deductible as charitable gifts. It allows us to solicit different foundations and grants, and I'm going to talk about that in a second, because one of the things we were unable to do before was work with foundations. If you're not a (c)(3), you can't work with a foundation to seek grant funding, and for our kind of mission in the community, we needed that. It enables ACT to enhance public education efforts about the importance of Cherry Point, and we can pursue those charitable endeavors aimed at supporting the Marines, their families, and veterans, which we do include all of those in our mission set. Yes, sir. All right. So, when we rebuilt our board, there was a lot of thought about what the board should look like, and becoming a (c)(3) meant we basically, everybody that was on the board came off the board, including me. Everyone came off the board. And then, we've always historically had seats for our four counties and a couple of our municipalities, partially because they're so supportive and because they're a part of Cherry Point's success. Craven County obviously being number one of those four counties, then Carteret, Pamlico, and Jones County. The city of New Bern, the city of Havelock, and the city of Newport have historically held a seat. So, what we did to rebuild the board was, those seven counties and municipalities all got to choose a member to come back. You guys chose Commissioner Mitchell, and then those seven rebuilt the new board. And so, the thought process was, not only do all of us have skin in the game, both monetarily and from an economic impact, but it allowed those seven that were really taking care of the base to decide who else was going to come join the team. In doing that, the board thought about different sectors, and the idea being, if we're really going to represent all of eastern North Carolina as a four-county region, you've got to include those sectors that are most impacted by Cherry Point. Construction being a huge one, obviously, because of all the military construction dollars. We've got over $1 billion worth of construction going on right now at Cherry Point. It's something like $12 billion over a 10-year period of construction work going on. So, we wanted construction, we wanted defense contractors involved. You just saw the list that the CO put up there that included all those defense partners, Lockheed and Rolls-Royce and Bell Boeing and all that. We wanted to make sure our defense contractors were included. Real estate, banking, automotive, public utilities, those make a lot of sense when you think about the $2.1 billion impact, which is what Cherry Point is to eastern North Carolina, and what that looks like across those industries. If you didn't have Cherry Point, how many less cars would you sell? How many less houses would be bought? And we all know, we've talked about that in the past, if you pulled it out, obviously Havelock is going to be the most dirt that comes out of the ground with the roots, but that spreads out across four counties, and all of our real estate, our insurance would be impacted by that. So, we chose those sectors very specifically. So, we need to make sure we have board members that represent those groups, and the reason being, they have skin in the game from the private sector, and we really need ACT to be driven by the private sector as much or more so even than the government sector, right? So, that's how we kind of reconstituted the board. We've been very successful in this. We have a member from every one of those groups on the board. Some of those groups, we have several that are representative of those groups, and it's helped us a lot in shaping how it affects the community. And some of y'all saw that with our golf cart fundraiser and how much more breadth we had across four counties, including Pitt County, which is where the winner was, ironically. All right, next slide, sir. We created two committees. Now, those of you that have worked with me on other stuff know that I'm not a committee fan, right? I always make the joke that a camel is nothing but a horse designed by a committee, right? So, we only have two committees, and it's because we feel like these are the two things that are most important at Allies for Cherry Points Tomorrow. One is the philanthropy committee. So, as a 501(c)(3), we have a commitment to do a certain amount of giving now every year. We already, before we were (c)(3), by the way, I should mention, we had giving portions before. One of the biggest ones we used to do was the deployment boxes, when the school system would put together their deployment boxes that would go to the young folks in elementary schools and middle schools and even the high schools. When their parents would deploy, there's a box they can receive, and it's got some stuff in it to keep them in contact with their military member that's gone and help them through that rough period. We sponsored a few thousand dollars of those boxes every year to go to those kids. So, we've been giving even as a (c)(4), but as a (c)(3), it's allowed us to ramp that up, obviously. And what we've done is, we've come up with a scholarship program, and Dr. Stats serves on our Allies for Cherry Points Tomorrow board from the education, secondary education level sector, and he serves as a non-voting member of our philanthropy committee, and we put together a scholarship package that serves all three of our community colleges in Carteret, Craven, and Pamlico County. It is to provide funding for those members or their families and veterans that are transitioning that need some help with the funding for that. Now, obviously, there's the GI Bill, right? And a lot of them are getting the GI Bill. We specifically chose to work in the sector that is not GI Bill-covered. So, an example, in Havelock, we have the Craven Community College campus that has the IAT in it, the Institute for Aeronautical Technology. Buying their toolboxes to go become one of those folks that the CO just talked about to come work on airplanes, buying a $1,000 toolbox is not covered by the GI Bill. We can cover that. Their testing, it's about $1,000 at the end, to actually get their AMP license is about $1,000. It could be a little bit more now, it's what it was a couple of years ago. So, if they want that AMP license, they have to pay for that. If you're 20 years old and just finished a two-year certificate at Craven, chances are you may not have that funding. We can help with that. We do a lot at the Volt Center here in New Bern, because a lot of those trade jobs are not covered by the GI Bill, and so we can step in and fill that. Our first year, our goal was to fund $20,000, and we've already funded that. We had funded that by November of this past year. From August to November, we'd already funded $20,000 in scholarships. It is tiered, and I don't want to get way into the details of that, but it's tiered where most of them are Craven County, not because we love Craven County more or because we live in Craven County, because the bulk of the transitioning military in Craven County. And then, the second tier goes to Carteret and then Pamlico. That is adjustable in the event that, say, one of those three ends up having way more scholarship opportunities than another. We can shift that as we need to, but, you know, we had Dr. Stats and some other folks that see this every day. They know where the students are, and so we structured it based on where the students are. Our fundraising committee, obviously, you can't operate in an organization like Allies for Cherry Points Tomorrow without funding, particularly to fund the scholarship and things like that, but y'all all saw our golf cart fundraiser last year. First time we had done that, one of our members from the communications sector, Radio Joe Peters, helped build that for us, and our fundraising committee was very successful, where we had a golf cart. We kind of tricked it out. We did an F-35 version golf cart, the one and only F-35 version that'll ever be out. It was all ACT logoed and F-35ed out and had graphics on it, and we took that all over the four-county region from July 4th, we kicked off, and then we drew a name the weekend of Veterans Day in November. So, we ran it for several months. It went all the way to Greenville and the other side of Greenville. It went all the way into deep Carteret County, all over Craven County, New Bern, Havelock, and we sold, I don't even remember how many tickets, thousands of dollars' worth of tickets. And it was a very successful fundraiser for ACT, and the lady who won it bought her ticket at the Royal Farms Grand Opening in Greenville. We were in Greenville for two days. We were at the law firm, the Hardy Law Firm, because he's a sponsor of ACT, and we were at the Royal Farms Grand Opening, and she bought her ticket at the Royal Farms Grand Opening and won the golf cart. And you might have seen some, we did some video on that and some social media stuff when she came to pick it up. They were super excited. So, they do things like that now, and the old days of throwing a gala, you know, that's a lot of lift, a lot of squeeze for the amount of juice you get, and the golf carts seemed like we were able to hit a lot larger area and get the message of ACT out. And so, some of the places we took the golf cart, you brought the golf cart, and we had the opportunity to speak for five minutes. Who is ACT, and what are you doing here? This is what ACT is, and this is what we do. is, and this is what we do. So it adds to our grassroots campaign of awareness. They're also going to be kicking off our new donor campaign. The fundraising committee is working on that now. And it'll be, I'd say, a miniature version of what you've seen the C-1A do. What we've all seen has been successful, which is targeting those businesses and partnerships within the region that are already participating with ACT and making sure that becomes a steady year-to-year thing into the future. All right, next slide, sir. We talk about advocacy for Cherry Point, and we've got four bullet points up here. And I'm not going to belabor reading through them. Some of these are very current. Some of them are from the last few years. So when I think about what ACT's role is, is really what I'll talk about on this slide. Government advocacy is really what it is. And the history of ACT, some of you know, started way back in the early 90s. And ACT would kind of gin up real strong for a BRAC. And then when the BRAC was over, they would kind of go into hibernation mode. And they did that often on '91, '93, another time in the 90s, 2000, and then 2005. After the BRAC in 2005, which is Base Realignment and Closure, after the one in 2005, the smart folks at ACT said, I don't understand why we keep going down and coming back up. We need to be an ongoing base sustainability organization. We can't just be BRAC-driven. And so ACT became a much more formidable organization as a result. And we've grown into a much more robust organization because we haven't had a BRAC since 2005. They talk about it every year. They will again this year. They have not, Congress has not had the appetite to actually fund a BRAC in the last several years. But let's just all be clear, through sequestration and what's happening in Congress now, it's death by a thousand cuts. And so every base has to be vigilant about sustainability. You lose a mission, you lose a squadron, you lose a capability, and your base becomes weaker and weaker. Then when you do enter a BRAC, obviously, you're not where you need to be. We focus on sustainability and mission. We are protecting what we have. I think from a, you'll see a lot of F-35 stuff on this list and C-130, because that's what we have today, and F-35s are what's coming. And we're programmed for that. And so we're vigilant. We make sure that we're getting the military construction dollars for those buildings and for those airplanes, to make sure we get all six squadrons. But at the same time, we're looking at the future, right? So we have to, you have to battle in the current space, and we have to plan for future battle space. And so we're thinking about what's coming. So for example, our unmanned aerial capabilities over there, we've, we've had a VMU squadron for a while at Cherry Point, but they're transitioning, transitioning to the new MQ-9. That's a Class 5, which basically, if you don't know about UAVs, that means they can carry weapons, right? The ones we've been flying up till now have been reconnaissance-type aircraft. This new one, which is coming onboard now, will be the training squadron for all the MQ-9s in the Marine Corps. And looking at that as the future and saying unmanned aerial flight is the future of the battle space. And so making sure we're postured to get more of that in the area on Cherry Point where we can. If you look at the bottom, at the third point, we talked about this deal for a C-130 maintenance hangar at Global Trans Park. That was the single largest appropriation that was not transportation in the history of the North Carolina General Assembly. They appropriated over $300 million to help build that building in a public-private partnership aboard the Global Trans Park. And that work for the C-130, you know, and FRC talking about working on C-130s, they've got a new type of work that's going to happen on these C-130s that will come here because of that to us at Cherry Point. So no place on the base to do it. So we'll do it at Global Trans Park, and eventually that work may transition back to the base over time. But it's a partnership with the Navy. ACT played a huge role in trying to figure out how all that was going to work, because you saw before, we got $5 million from the state, and then it took years to get that translated to an actual building aboard Cherry Point. We look at it as, oh, if Craven County gives Havelock money, or if Havelock gives Craven County money, we're going to figure out how to make that work. Doesn't work that way in the Navy, right? It was a multi-year process. So we've been in that from the very beginning, trying to decide, how does that money come out of the state? How does it go to the Navy? How does the Navy accept it? Then how does the Navy build this building at Global Trans Park to make that happen? So in some ways, we facilitate things like that. And you guys know the team. I don't need to list them all. We've got Mark here and our board of directors, but also Jamie Norman. And our government advocacy team includes Daniel Sheehan in Washington, DC, every day, working on the Hill for us, and Randy West. And then, if you guys have any question, last one I'll say, and just, the last one's the second lad battery maintenance, right? So this was on the UFR, the unfunded request list for 2024. So some of the ways we help with ACT is, we would go to the service and say, this is an unfunded request. You talk to your senator and your congressman, would you be interested in pulling that off and funding it separately? Second lad is one of those examples where our senators were able to pull that off the list and get that funded for Cherry Point two years earlier than it normally would be. And so we're always focused on the unfunded request list and things like that. I also have, and I will take questions, but I brought these as well. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll pass these out. These are kind of some of the things we do from a grassroots effort. So you've got a slick sheet, so we call them slick sheets, on, you got a slick sheet on Cherry Point, a slick sheet on FRC, and a slick sheet about the F-35. I got two So this is an example of what we do from a grassroots perspective. This is a way to just take something that's really, really complicated. We could stand here and talk for the next four hours about just Cherry Point. We could talk for another four hours just about FRCs to try to understand it all. This slick sheet takes all that and kind of puts it on one page for people to just look at real quick and say, what is $2.1 billion of impact? And that breaks it down. These are the sectors that it's in. What does that look like from employees? What are we actually protecting? That's sort of what that is there to define. So with that, I could go on. Y'all know how passionate I am about ACT. You know how passionate I am about Cherry Point. I could talk for the next three hours. We don't, nobody wants that. Nobody wants that. So whatever questions you have, I'd be happy to entertain. Or if you want me to expand on anything, I certainly will.
All right, commissioners, questions?
Yes, sir.
Well, not a question, but you quickly went over something that I don't know that everybody understood what you were talking about.
Yes, sir.
And that is the, I'll call them drones, that are now going to carry weapons. Could you, just for the audience, explain, these things aren't little, we, we think of drones, we see these things flying around town here that are about this big. These things are like an airplane. They're like, they're, they're, but they're big. And we were, at Cherry Point, I, I was there, I've been there a number of times, but last week, and we saw the hangar that was just completed for them. And we didn't see any of the, of the drones. I use the word drones. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but what, what's the official, unmanned?
UAV, yes, sir. Unmanned aerial vehicle, yes, sir.
So I think it's really important that, that everybody understands how, and it may not be specifically ACT role, but, but how important these things are going to be in the future. Because the pilot's going to be at Cherry Point, but the drone may be 5,000 miles away. And they're flying them from Cherry Point with weapons, the new ones, right?
Yes, sir.
Did I say that correctly?
You did. You got it correct. And, and you're right. So if we look at the history of UAVs at Cherry Point, if you just go back 10 years ago, we could have put that UAV, like, right here. We could all sat around and looked at it. And then the last one we just had would fit, we'd take out the front two rows and it would fit. The new one, we need this room.
Yep.
And, and it is completely unmanned. It will carry weapon systems. But it also has really enhanced data collection capabilities. And so you do have a pilot that sits in a box, as, as I call it, because it looks like a little container that they sit inside of to fly it. But there's a second person that is trained as a data collector, that's receiving all the information from that UAV, and then making decisions about the battle space 10,000 miles away. So the folks on the ground or the folks that are coordinating that know what's actually happening. So these do both.
I think the other point that, that we heard last week was that the kids that are doing video games today and know how to take that console and make it go, those are going to be the, those are the skills it's going to take to fly this thing.
Absolutely. The quick thinking ability and using your hands without looking at them, that's what they're looking for. Matter of fact, the new F-35, the F-35 flies that way. And you guys have seen some of the cockpit of that. And Lockheed Martin sometimes brings a demonstrator around, and I've had the ability to fly it a couple of times. And they say, hands down, young 20-year-olds fly it 10 times better than anybody in this room will. And, and, and I don't play video games, so I get in there and they're like, toggle this. And I have to listen to them, right? And I have crashed it a few times. But you put someone in there who flies a video game, and they're like, stop talking to me. I got it. And they're flipping switches and flying the aircraft. So that is how things are transitioning.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, additional questions?
But I do have one request. I would like to just say that I do appreciate being able to come. And I think we were here about 18 months ago, 20 months ago, I think Mark saw, talking before we made our transition. And we would, as ACT, like to make this, we, we do need to make this a regular thing, because I think our mission's going to evolve a little bit going into the future as we work through our scholarship program. And we'd love to report to you on what that's doing at Craven County, what that's doing in Carteret County and Pamlico for the region. So I look forward to doing this every year. And I think last time we did it in August. And obviously, February is a much better time for us to come see you and talk about this. And I would like to just go ahead now and say, we appreciate your support for future years. And we'd appreciate it if you would support us like you did in past years this year.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for the time.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. One or two things, commissioners. And first, for the public, our clerk has the information that was provided to the board. So if any citizen desires that, it, it is public information, and she has it, and it is available through our office. So we, we want to make sure all of our citizens understand that. Commissioners, also, during budget time, we appropriated, I believe in staff, you'll have to make sure I'm right, but we appropriated $12,500 towards, we call it ACT, Allies for Cherry Point Tomorrow. And we had discussed about the possibility of, after we received this presentation, to come back and, and to consider additional funding. So I bring that to the board today. Is there any discussion on that matter?
Well, I'll go ahead and, there was a request for additional $12,500, a total of $25,000. So I would make that motion this morning, that the board approved $12,500 to fund our commitment to Allies for Cherry Point for this budget year that we're in, '23, '24. So the motion's on the table.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appropriate $12,500. Any discussion on the motion? Do you have anything, Commissioner?
This $12,000 will, will add, and altogether, it will be $25,000.
Yes, ma'am. We've all, and that was our, it was a verbal commitment, I think, that's been made in the past. And I, I would say, further discussion, I, I would say with that, and, and I appreciate the mayor saying that, your willingness to come back to the board. And I think that, you know, that would be very helpful for this board in the future if we could go ahead and, and make that, y'all put it on your calendar, we'll put it on ours, to make sure that we do that on a yearly basis, just to receive updates like we do from other nonprofits. We appreciate that. Any additional comments? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table for $12,500 here. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Just reviewing my notes. Thank you. Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you again for y'all being here today.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess to allow time for staff to go get Commissioner Mitchell. The next item that we will have is a presentation from Mr. Alan Thomas for our annual audit report. And he can go ahead and get ready and to come forward and get his presentation. We'll take a five. Now, we may have one or two out. We've got a long agenda, so we probably need to get started. Item three on our agenda today is the presentation of the 2023 Annual Audit Report. We're honored this morning to have Mr. Alan Thompson with us. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning to all the committees.
Welcome.
If you would be kind enough to get me to page one on our presentation. So the main thing you hire us as an independent audit firm to do is issue an audit opinion on financial statements as a whole. We issue an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote clean report. Mr. Warren and his team, we're great to work with. We appreciate that very much. I'm going to probably scan through a couple of these things. I have to tell you real quick. Under qualitative aspects of the accounting practices, the appropriate accounting policies, accounting estimates, and disclosure, financial statements were all good. We appreciate all the effort that went into that. And on page two, there were no difficult, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements. There were no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated December 27. We were unaware that management consulted the outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. Under other findings or issues, we went through that with Mr. Warren, but a couple items in the convention center and in the refunds and releases that we asked just to take a harder look at that, that were really approval and timing issues from the internal control process. And then on page four, if you would, sir, when we get to the actual numbers. So I don't say on page four, these are all the key numbers in the audit report, but there are some of the key numbers in the audit report, and they keep you from having to flip through the prior four years' audit reports to do any comparison. So what we attempt to do is put the current year's numbers there in 2023, and then the four prior years there, so you get some type of feel for what the numbers are and have context to them and any trends that might go along with those. So you can see total fund balance there in your general fund at $65,129,000. If you go back to 2019, you see where that number is $39,302. Unavailable fund balance is $11.9 million. The available fund balance is $53.1, restricted and committed at $12.2, and then unassigned fund balance at $52,870. Total general fund expenditures, including transfers out, $145.9 million. The fund balance available as a percentage, 36.45%. And fund balance unassigned as a percentage at 36.23%. Revenues over and under expenses before transfers in the general fund is $6.1 million, and the water fund is $533,000 negative. We put the depreciation expense underneath that, which is 1.7, because it's a non-cash item. And even though you had a negative in the depreciate, I mean, in the operations, you see where 1.7 of that was non-cash. In the enterprise funds, net cash versus water fund, you see $31.1 million in total net investment in capital assets, the unrestricted net position at $12.8, and the total net position at $44 million, and the total cash at $13.2 million. Property tax rates there, you see for all five years, along with the collection percentages, which are very strong, 99%, and the collection percentages, which doesn't have the meaning it once did, excluding motor vehicles. You see your total property valuation for the five years and total levy amounts there for your five years as well. And then if you'd be kind enough to flip over to page five for me, I won't read each one of these numbers, but you see a total breakdown of your general fund revenues, and you can compare those five years there, where you basically went in '19 from $108.8 million in revenues, up to $138.1 million in revenues for the current year. And you had $102,000.7 in '19 in expenditures, up to $132 million for the June 30, 2023 year. You see your government-wide net position there at $179.5 million, which is a net position increase there of $26.49 million. And government-wide, I have my own feelings on that, but it, most people don't look at it from a, you never see it from a budget standpoint. Most, and talking to some folks at the state, the only people who probably look at government-wide are Moody's and another rating agency. Because for general statute purposes, nobody goes to government-wide financial statements. And government-wide basically takes your general fund or special revenue funds and converts them over to business-type activities, just for the meaning on that. So when you look at your general fund, you don't have any fixed assets or debt. Government-wide takes those fixed assets and debts and puts them on there, along with a couple of other adjustments. So from a budget standpoint, you're never going to look at that. On page six, the top slide there has total fund balance, available fund balance, and unassigned fund balance. You can see a very positive trend overall there. On the bottom, you see available fund balance and unassigned. Couple of things that you'll always look at, or the debt committee at the LGC State Treasurer's Office almost would always look at, is tax collection percentage and unavailable and unassigned fund balance. So those are strong in your financials, so they would look good if you ever went to the debt committee to borrow any money for any projects that you had. On page seven, you see collection percentages for the county, as well as counties exceeding $100 million, as well as statewide All of which are around 98, 99%, or hovering all over the 99%. So you're right in line with everybody else there. On page eight, at the top, you see a breakdown in a pie chart there of your general fund revenue, with sales tax and abhorrent tax being your big ones. You can see abhorrent tax at 42.78%. And on the bottom of that same page, you see the amount in millions for the specifics, abhorrent taxes, sales tax, sales and services, investment earnings, intergovernmental revenue. abhorrent taxes, sales tax, sales and services, investment earnings, intergovernmental revenue, miscellaneous, and you can see how they may have progressed over the years. Abhorrent going from 52 to 59, as an example. And then on page nine, the same thing on expenditures. You see education, social services, general government, public safety being the bigger ones, and those are on the bottom, showing where they've gone, and you can see education there going from 27 to 30 million over the time period. And you can look at any of the other three there that you want to see where it's going in terms of total millions of expenditures. The big thing from my standpoint that I'd like for you to take away is unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote "clean" report. There are no findings, no response necessary to the LGC. The LGC, in addition to that, if you've been around a while, you know they used to send out quote-unquote "unit letters," and they'd want you to respond to that. There's no requirements based on their templates out there for a response to the LGC on that. So all that is very positive for the county as a whole. County's numbers overall are positive, so I'm happy to answer any questions today, or anytime you've got questions of me. You always, feel free to give me a call if I happen not to be at the office. Tell them, give me my cell number, track me down, I'll get you an answer to your question.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson. All right, questions from the board? Could you? Go ahead.
Could you explain for the folks who are watching us at home, when we look at fund balance, our fund balance looks really strong as compared to what it was five years ago. But you mentioned unavailable. Could you explain what that is?
Unavailable.
What would be in that category?
It's basically your receivables in the general fund. They restrict that. They call it restricted by state statute. So if you've got 65 million in total fund balance, unavailable fund balance, 11.9, a lot of that might be sales tax receivable or other receivables that are still hanging out there. You can't spend it till you actually collect it, so it's unavailable.
So our sales tax lags way behind.
It does.
Months, months and months behind when it's actually collected by the merchants until we get it.
Correct. Technically, you don't get all of June's sales tax till around September 15th. So there's approximately a 90-day window there you're not collecting.
Right, thank you.
County's not getting it.
All right, other questions? I just got one, and this may be for staff to answer this. On page four, we talk about the general fund and water fund, and it shows that we're under in our water fund by $533,000. Could y'all give a little explanation on that one?
And I think Mr. Thompson touched on that, but you got depreciation expense there of 1.7 million, meaning non-cash, so you get into a negative through that depreciation process, but maybe, I don't know if he wants to elaborate a little bit more on that?
It could be in terms of the operational category there. I'll say this before I start. If the LGC or anybody else who creates all the templates for concern had any issues, it'd be on the final page, there'd be an issue regarding that. The main thing, what you're really looking for in enterprise fund is cash flow, and when you can have a, basically, 533 loss of $1.7 million non-cash, you may have other projects that are coming along, which may absorb some cash, but from an operational standpoint, you did have a positive cash flow in that.
That's what we're looking for.
I mean, I should have said this earlier. We're doing the meter change-out over five years, which is about 1.2 million a year, so that could be impacting the cash. By the way I read it, Mr. Thompson, is there's still 12 million, or $11 million in cash in the account?
Yes, sir.
And your fund balance in the water fund, I mean, you got 11 million in cash plus, but you're kind of moving forward with the meters, and I think year one, Craig, may have been a little stronger at 1.6 million to put the antennas up, and then it'll go flat to 1.1. So that could be where some of the delta is.
Not to mention the routine capital maintenance costs, have increased, and that's part of it, too.
Okay, thank you. And just, it's already been pointed out, I just think it needs to be pointed out again, and this just, I commend this board of commissioners, I commend staff, but the investment we are making into fund balance, our general fund, again, 2019, we had $39 million. It's increased to $65 million. Those are big numbers in that short period of time. And we've always said, Jack, I think that we felt like we needed to have somewhere close to 20 percent of our budget in fund balance, but with this, we're definitely, well, our budget is increasing, but I think due to its being a desire of this board and because of where we live, we know what Hurricane, Hurricane Florence, that, you know, that 18 percent number there that we always kind of looked at, that's probably not enough and that we needed to increase it, and so I think we're probably getting to that point. You feel like that way, Craig?
Yes, sir. I think we've had a more of a different policy of 18.25 percent, but jacked it out until this point after experiencing hurricane course, or had positive therapy. As a form, I need some more of the recommended range, maybe to 37 percent, and of course we need to keep up with our increasing demand on budget and expenses as well.
Commissioner Mitchell?
This is a question for the county manager, really, to explain to the citizens something that maybe not everybody is aware of, and to talk about what we use the fund balance for when we have an emergency or a hurricane. In other words, we have to pay the bills, and then several years later, state and federal government will make us whole. Could you elaborate with that one a little bit?
Sure, and you gave a great explanation there, is that you're still operating at 100 percent capacity, maybe even 150 percent capacity, because there's probably things we're doing during an emergency we normally would not do. So we're outlaying a lot of cash very quickly, and as an example, during Florence, I believe it was, by the time this board actually met, we had outlaid somewhere between 10 and 12 million dollars just to stabilize the emergency situation, right? And that's anywhere from having additional staff come in, generators, unorthodox things like pumping water because the neighborhood's underwater and getting that water across the street. I mean, those things are very expensive. It calls engineers and other folks to come in. So to your point, 18 percent, you know, you can, you could be out of cash pretty quick if that's the philosophy. So 30 to 35 is where you need to be. And, no offense to our federal government partners, but when you're dealing with federal government, it's not tomorrow. It's sometime in a couple of years when you get whole. And Craig, if I'm not mistaken, from a 2018 storm, we're still waiting on one FEMA payment now, and some of it came in in '21 and '22, so.
We've still got three mitigation projects.
Yep.
And not to mention that, of course, when we were on the base last week, you could still see that they were recovering as well as a lot of construction. Our building's still being built around there as well. So it's definitely a long process.
All right, any other questions?
I just had a question, not to prolong anything, but page five, Jack. I see two positives, positives I'm just glad, if you could elaborate on. Investment earnings from 2019 to 2023, is that just due to the increase in fund balance?
No, sir. It's the interest rates in which we're able to invest money at now. Obviously, it's much more lucrative in the last couple of years than it was, say, five years ago. And Craig doesn't, and I hope his head fits through the door after I say this, but Craig does a great job of managing our investments, looking at the best opportunities. We are restricted by state law what we can invest in. Most of the things are very conservative, but Craig picks the things out, and he just, we just talked about that last week. He's got some things now, some really good interest rates, so see that continuing as long as the market holistically stays there.
That was a positive. And then the debt services, decrease in that over the last.
Yeah, so that's a phenomenon that I think I've spoke about a couple of times. We took on some debt mid-2000s, around 2006. Most, if not all of that debt in the general fund falls off in '26. So as an amortization schedule works, you're getting down to the last few years where you're going to start paying less and less. And what that does is it opens up capacity for this board if there are other projects you want. You already have the funding stream there, right? You just determine and point that toward a new project, or you save it and you have a cash flow at the beginning of a project where you've got more fund balance concept.
So we were actually, we're within 10 years of being debt-free, which would include all the school borrowings and 13 years in the utility fund. If we were to not take out any more debt, it would all be paid off in 10 years.
Any additional questions? Again, Ms. Thompson, thank you for you and your staff and what you do to assist Craven County and our citizens. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have safe travels. Commissioners, item four is the consent agenda. You have there the minutes of the February 5th, 2024 regular session, and the January 30th, 2024 special session. Also, you have tax releases and refunds. Are there consent agenda items you desire to pull this morning?
Recommend we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Departmental Matters, item five, Social Services. We're honored this morning to have Mr. Jeffrey Merritt, our Social Services Director. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This morning, we bring before you two budget amendments. The first involving our Home Care Community block grant, we received additional ARPA funds that need to be added to this fiscal year. We're going to be adding some additional monies to our Title III Health Promotions Funds, additional monies towards transportation, additional monies towards Congress Mills, and additional monies towards our senior services operations. That, in that operations funding, is going to include some special projects that could be done on an ARPA that we normally could not do, which is help building ramps, and also helping with chore services, which will help us to provide some lawn care and other things that some of our elderly population have trouble doing and may not have the funds to do. So that is, these are what these funds are being budgeted for and what we would hope to expend them for. And again, this would not need a county match.
Okay, Commissioners, you have any questions?
No, I move that we approve this agenda item.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $105,400. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, all right, item B.
Our second budget amendment involves additional funds for our foster care and adult services units. The first is, I will go over our foster care 4E and 4B funds. Those are funds used to pay for room and board rates for our foster children. We've included explanation there as to the reason why they needed additional funds. We are requesting, and as you can see, that we're continuing to have extensive needs with children in our foster care division. And, you know, we're also seeing some additional expenses in trying to house children with some severe behavioral needs. You know, we, as you can, as you've seen in your reports, what I've stated, that we do have to house some children in our local DSS offices. There are times where we can find what's called a respite placement that our LME MCO provides us with, and those, but they are rather expensive, still less expensive than having to staff there, you know, 24 hours a day and having to pay comp time and benefits and things such as that, but those are driving costs as well. If you can also see, there was legislation passed around Senate Bill 20, and that bill moved very fast and had additional language, and we've included those new rates for foster homes and also for adoption assistance payments, which is also included in here, that caused counties to have to contribute more to those funds. In those pages, you can see those rates have gone up by almost an average of 22 percent. They're paid based upon age, but you take those three age ranges, and the amount that's gone up has been 22 percent in addition to the cost for the foster homes as well.
All right, questions for Mr. Merritt? I think it just should be pointed out, just so all of our citizens make sure they understand in the agenda packet, which is public information that's been provided for us this morning. In December 2023, Mr. Merritt, his office, they had 116 children here in Craven County in foster care.
Right.
116. If you go look at fiscal year '23-'24 for adult care, there are 84 adults averaged each month under the guardianship of this gentleman, that he has to make sure that their day-to-day needs are being met. 84 adults. And you carry a great load, sir.
Not just me, you know, we have great staff that really care for these individuals. And also in that budget amendment, you mentioned Chairman Jones has additional funds to assist individuals who we come into contact with through adult services, those not only in our guardianship program, but also through our adult protective services. We are statutorily mandated to provide protection for those we find in need of. I think you've seen in your commissioner packet, the increase, the number of adult protective service reports we're receiving. Last year, calendar year 2023, we received, I think, 625. Last calendar year, in 2022, we had 480. So that's the number we've received. We're seeing a major increase in those numbers, which is driving up some of these costs. You see some examples there where we come into contact with individuals and we have to try to find them protection, and many times, it's putting them somewhere and taking them out of that situation and making sure there's someone there to care for them until we can find placement, which at times doesn't happen overnight. You know, you've got to go and get medical evaluations done, a doctor to sign off on what type of care is needed. And, you know, as we know, in trying to get a regular doctor's appointment, that can be tough. So that is something that we have to maintain these people are safe in order to, you know, get them to where they can be in a fully safe situation, which many times is a facility, unfortunately, but it takes some time to get there. And that, and with the cost of AIDS, in-home aid services, they've gone up over 33 percent in the last year, so that's also additionally driving up costs, your numbers, and the cost of having to contract with the companies to come in and help, which we're very grateful for them. But that's just some, those are some details behind those costs going up as well.
Vice Chair Booker?
You mentioned how many children in foster care currently, or as of December, it was 113 or whatever. Looking back, and I think we've talked about this before, you've talked about it before, in March of 2017, we had 68. So we've gone from 68 to 118. It was 120-something last year or the year before. The big jump, I believe, we've been told, is the number of families where drugs have become a part of the family and have required us to take these children out of the home they're living in and put them into foster care. You know, we can talk about, it starts at the southern border, it talks about the drugs coming into our county, and what the sheriff is doing to try to reduce that, but it's a major societal cost beyond just all the overdoses and suicides, et cetera. It's an epidemic, and you're the beneficiary, unfortunately, of what's going on.
We'll have some numbers as well. I figured, I thought that may be a question. In January, we went from 116 to 113 children in care. Of those, 113, you know, now you have to know, some of these two numbers, they do overlap some, but 46 percent was opioids involved, so it may have been opioid or some other drug, but opioid was a contributing factor. So that's 40 percent of our children in care, and just any substance could have been opioid and another one. Again, these two numbers that have some duplicates in it, it's 75 children were in our care because of substance abuse concerns. So that's 66 percent of our caseload there, and that is something that's definitely driving these numbers to continue, driving these numbers up and how they continue to rise.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Opioid money, settlement money, can any of that be used for, in this instance?
Mr. Merritt and his team are, there was just an RFP put out by the state, I believe it was late last week, for a program called the START program, which, Jeff, I'm going to let you articulate it, but generally, it's a more intensive approach to dealing with opioids in a family setting where there's, you know, potential for us to have custody, Jeff?
Right, so that is, we, our agency, you know, we're always, you know, we keep seeing these numbers, and, you know, our staff, I always talk about our social work staff, and I will say that my first job in an department of social services was going out and assessing abuse and neglect and dependency in Lenore County, well, actually, Green County, then in Lenore, went to graduate school in between then, but, you know, that, you know, it is, it's something where when a social worker goes out, it's almost as if, you know, we get a case regarding, you know, substance abuse, where they have to be a licensed clinical addiction specialist, they have to be a psychiatrist, a psychologist, and, you know, I don't know anyone that has expertise in all of those areas. But substance abuse is a very, you know, tricky and sometimes a very difficult thing to assess. You're dealing with someone who is working with an addiction, and they're driving, that addiction's driving them to make decisions that they otherwise wouldn't, and sometimes they want to, you know, try to mask over some of those things. And, you know, with our staff that we have and not dealing with those or maybe having no other experience coming in before they work those cases, it could be hard to work those situations. And also, you know, we do come in from a little bit of an adversarial standpoint. I'm not. bit of an adversarial standpoint. I'm not going to be frank about it, you know, because Social Services has the stigma that we take children into foster care. We do. We have 113. We don't go out and take every child into foster care or remove them from a home, but that is a possibility when we go out to a home. With this START program, so we looked at it and we said, what can we try to do, and this is even before we knew the state was going to do an RFP, what are some programs that are out there that's seen success in trying to break some of these cycles with addiction in families and trying to help families remain together? Because we, you know, we want to try to help people get through the issues, especially substance abuse addiction of what they're going through, and help that remain, that family intact, you know, helps that child remain with that family, hopefully helps heal family rifts it may have caused because of those issues, a lot of other things that I won't go over. But my friend in Bunkin County, Mr. Stony Blevins, talked about a program. It's called STARS, called sobriety treatment and recovery teams. And myself and Sherry Daniels, who's the deputy director, and, you know, part of her direct reports are from child welfare, spoke with them. And they've had this program implemented for some years now, and they've seen some real success with it. And we were going, and I was speaking with the county manager about maybe this is a program that we could pursue and implement it in our county, because I don't have the statistics now, but they saw a drastic, I would say up to a third of reduction in foster care after a program's been implemented two or three years. And in those START teams, what happens, we work very closely and we put those services in place for reports that have children aged zero to five, up until we can anymore because there's a cap, depending on the number of workers working in that program. So, you contract with a clinical provider. You also contract with peer support specialists. It's called a DIAD, the social worker and the supervisor. And what happens, if we get one of those reports, we'll go out and assess and see if a referral is needed. And if it is, it really starts fast-tracking that family in those substance abuse disorder services from a clinical perspective. But that peer support specialist also is there, is someone who has that lived experience, who can hopefully connect with that individual and help kind of guide them as well, in addition to the social worker through that, to the appropriate services, and also help them to try and, you know, maintain and move forward in their recovery, which would, in the long term, help them recover and also help them, you know, retain custody of their children. And there's been very positive recidivism rates, you know, after sobriety for, I think, a year. Again, I don't have that in front of me. But that is something that we're exploring. Again, that RFP came out. I've been looking at it, I think it came out Thursday. So, I think I've read it twice, just because, you know, there's a lot to decipher in there. And I'm going to be speaking with the county manager and seeing if that is something that Craven County wants to pursue and start the START program here in Craven County.
Additional questions?
I think that covered it. I did have a probably more informational question. When you see the old rate versus the new rate in here?
Yes.
Is that like a monthly rate?
Yes, it is.
Support a kid? Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Jeff, you want to talk about the kinship care payment? Because that was not something we've ever paid before. And I want the board to understand that the law changed after your budget last year, and there's a significant impact to that.
Sure. So, the General Assembly have been speaking about it for some time, is that one of the ways is that if children cannot maintain in their biological parent or the caretakers from whom they've had to be removed from, then we want to try to find a kinship option. So, there is a very broad base, and I don't have it in front of me, of the relationship, but it's not just an aunt or uncle. It goes to cousins and step relationships and things like that. A lot of times, the barriers that, you know, when a child's being placed in a family foster home, there was monthly financial assistance to help with that child being moved in for those costs of care. Well, if there's a kinship placement, there was not one. So, if, let's just say that, you know, my siblings, and just because I'm related to them, they came in to me and said, hey, Jeff, your sibling's having issues. Their children need to come out of their home. Would you be willing to have them move into your home? And I'd say, you know, I'd have to say, sure. But of course, I'd say, you know, well, can I afford it? I'd be taking at least one new child in my home. But, so that'd be something I have to consider. For foster homes, if they do come into care, and that child may not have even come into care, but say that they did, they would get Medicaid and maybe could get some assistance with childcare subsidy, but for, you know, just regular expenses regarding food, regular expenses regarding my utilities going up, or, you know, the agency would also help out with some clothes, but there's going to be some more expenses. That would be to the extent of the assistance that I get. Where family foster homes, they get that, and they'd also get, you know, you're being paid that monthly rate, like Commissioner Howard said. Well, now, the General Assembly wanted to try to help incentivize those individuals who would be kinship placements to take those children. And one of those is by giving them a monthly rate. And while it is not as much as the foster homes, it is a rate that you see that there is some financial contribution there that was enacted in Senate Bill 20 for those children who are in our custody. And we find a relative and we say, oh, you know, and, you know, sometimes we may not find them because parents may not be cooperative with us. You know, then the word gets out and family says, hey, I understand that you have my niece or my nephew in custody. And we'll say, I'm interested in caring for him or her. And so, what we would do, we do an assessment. We find it's fine, then, you know, we start having those conversations. And now, we can say, well, you know, if that child's in our custody, you're able to get a financial contribution each month for having that child, whereas not, sometimes we run those barriers, like I really want, you know, my relative in my home, but, you know, I'm just not able to afford it right now. So, hopefully, that will break down some of those barriers and try to help keep children with their family. Not that our family foster homes don't do a good job, but those are people that they know. And many times, they still remain in their community. So, hopefully, what would happen is that, you know, they can hopefully still go to the same school. They're able to see the same things they're seeing every day. So, there's going to be some trauma, but you try to lessen it some.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes. The kinship care, is there a problem with that parent, if the parent knows that a child is with a brother, sister, or whatever, will they interfere with the care, visiting the home unnecessarily trying to take the child?
Well, can't answer that question.
I would say, Commissioner Smith, a lot of times, when we work those kinship care, we put in some parameters around supervision and the parent's ability to go, who has to be there. And it's very strict that it has to abide by there, or else we, you know, we've got to be able to trust that kinship person to do that, to ensure that the reasons why we took, removed that child from the parent.
My concern is not the kinship person, but the parent.
Okay. Well, and Commissioner Smith, it is where if the parent does not abide by that, many times, well, not many times, every time, this is in court, they're given an attorney, and that, we can try to work out visitation arrangements to where it may be that they're trying to disrupt it, or they're trying to not abide by the agreement, or it's just, it's becoming a factor where it's making it very difficult for that kinship provider to care for that child because of maybe constantly calling, constantly coming by, unannounced, things such as that. We've got to put some structure in there, not only for the kinship care, but also for the child, to where we could probably do as we do with children who may, who are not in kinship, where maybe they would be a little more lenient, but say they're in a family foster home, and we would set up a visitation schedule where they would be most likely at our office and under the supervision of one of our staff.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Additional questions? All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $545,000 to be added to this fiscal year's budget. Any further discussion on the motion?
I just want to make a comment, just startling, more we hear about from our opioid summit, and then you hear about the impact of even foster care. It's just 50% of these are opioid-related, almost startling. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. And Chairman, I would say one thing, that those foster care 4B funds are reimbursed at a 50% rate by the state, and the ones budgeted in our foster care 4E will be reimbursed at 80%, so, by state and federal funds. So, those two are not all county costs.
All right, any additional discussion? Here now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Jeff, you said you had a little additional information on Medicaid?
And we're still seeing increased applications. And we're, I want to kind of report back out, you know, I came to you, I believe, in January, that second meeting, and I spoke about the number of pending applications we had that from the first business day in January of 2023 versus 2024. Our staff are working very hard in trying to work those pending applications down. And just a reminder, on January 2nd of this year, we had 1,134 pending applications. As of today, I was looking at the report that they send out each, you know, each day. And I tried to look at it, you know, the first and third Mondays, you know, we had 706 pending applications. So, we're down 38% from that time. You know, I look at some of those other counties that I spoke with you, and Craven County is one of the highest in working those pending applications down. So, that is something that our staff are working very hard in trying to do. They understand the, you know, the need for those applications to be done, the revenues that are released from having someone who is determined eligible for Medicaid that goes for our hospital, our doctor's offices, our health department. I try to keep you updated with the number of applications as well. Unfortunately, we were told by, that the federal government across the nation is starting to look at overdue applications. And I will tell you that with the influx of applications, almost every county has overdue applications, even ourselves. And they are threatening some financial penalty there, but the state has assured us they're going to try to work very hard to alleviate those. You know, this is, I guess, the perfect storm almost with Medicaid expansion in North Carolina and, you know, the increased work, and now they're coming and saying this. But, I mean, we're starting, we have April Ross, our income maintenance administrator, is there, and we've got a strategy to try and reduce those, and they have been going down. And we do get reports where we can see work cases, hopefully before they get overdue, and work back, work those ones back from overdue. So, we're really trying hard to do that as well. You know, our staff are working very hard. I want to thank the county manager for working with us. We're trying to find some extra time where maybe we can, you know, our staff are wanting to do this. They want to try to get this work done and allow them for some extra time here in the next couple of months to help kind of chip away at that. So, I just want to commend them. They're the ones doing the work every day. We help try to find them solutions to where they can get that work done.
Mr. Chair. For the overdue applications, is there a common theme over why they are running overdue other than staff workload? I mean, I understand your staff is doing one-armed paper hangers trying to get these processed, but is there a typical reason why they're overdue other than that?
What we're seeing the vast majority of the time, Commissioner Mitchell, is the federally facilitated marketplace, is that it's not always a seamless transition. You know, someone will go into federally facilitated marketplace, and then the next day, they will come. That clock starts the minute that they're there. So, if they go in and ask to be redetermined for Medicaid eligibility, and there's a 45-day timeframe. Sometimes, we may not get it to the 40th day, and then, but that still requires us to send out notices, and then there's timeframes that make it go after, and that's going to put us overdue. But then, we've got the federal government telling us that you need these applications done timely. The federally facilitated marketplace will be hopefully wrapping up. You know, we'll get those applications done by April, so hopefully, we'll see them go down. But when I looked at the report, there was maybe only two or three that were not due to the federally facilitated marketplace. And also, you know, we do have NCFAST where there are cases that could get hung up, where we had to put a ticket in. And, you know, we just don't want to close those out because we put those tickets in because we think this person, you know, requires an eligibility determination, but something hangs it up in the system, and you have all the cases from the state going there. And, you know, then that could possibly put it over the timeframe as well. We track those as well. Those are two of our major issues.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
All right, any additional questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you both being here this morning. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones, can we request him to come back and report back on that START opioid collaboration program at some point?
Yeah, budget time.
We'll come back, Jeff and I'll work toward a budget.
Thank you.
All right. All right, item six, emergency services. We honored this morning to have with us Mr. Ira Whitford, our Assistant EMS Director. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. It's a come before you this morning. Last fall, we had the opportunity to fill out a grant with the 911 Board to purchase six Viper radio portables that would be stationed at each 911 console for redundancy and backup purposes for communications. We have received that, and it is for one Viper radio at six, all six consoles. It'll come with that with batteries, chargers, and one-year maintenance warranty on that. The radios that we're looking at purchasing is the Motorola APX 8000. It's for 7, 800 frequency, VHF and UHF. And that, so this time, I'd like to ask permission to, authorization to move forward with this grant.
All right.
The total grant will be for $49,985.34.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant agreement. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say the hard work Stanley and I and Patty put forth in getting this. And just for the record, it's $49,985, but it's 100% grant. So, it's a big deal, and it's something that we were going to have to do anyway. So, I appreciate them thinking forward on this and taking something out of the budget next year.
That's great. All right, any further discussion? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, buddy. Appreciate you. All righty. Next, item seven is our Health Director, Mr. Scott Harrelson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Here this morning with a request, our revenue lines have surpassed our annual projections, and my finance officer, Mr. Cole Sutton, tells me we need to ask for, to up those $28,000. These two particular areas are in our communal disease and also travel shock clinic. So, evidently, people are traveling out of the country more, I guess, now after the pandemic, and also for COVID vaccines. This morning, our immunization nurse tells me we're averaging not many, five to 10 a week, but our cost on those is right around $200. So, it really doesn't take long to run up a tab for those two areas. Total request is $28,000.
All right, board, what's your desire?
I'm moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $28,000. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I just had a question.
Okay, we'll go to Vice Chairman Booker.
It just might be, Scott, appropriate to mention that the opioid, I'm just going to opioid, let me back up, that the COVID vaccine was free, and now we have to pay for it.
Correct, yes, sir. Very valid point. And our cost is, on these are close to $200 a vaccine. And then, we implement a customary, a customary charge for supplies and dispensing on top of that.
I think the good news is not a lot of people are getting that vaccine.
Well, I don't, I guess it's what side of the fence you come down on the COVID vaccine. We have it available, and that was one thing, we were just at a loss as to how to gauge participation or demand.
Commissioner Howard, and then we'll go to Commissioner Hunt.
You mentioned that part of the increase is just due to people traveling outside of the country?
Yes, sir.
Probably a dilatory question, but if they can afford to pay, travel outside of the country, couldn't we just charge them for the additional vaccination? Is that just not what we do?
Oh, I'm sorry. The travel shock clinic, we implemented years ago as a convenience for the area. So, they, we do. We charge them.
We do, okay.
We purchased it in advance. We don't, a lot of those vaccines are expensive, so we don't keep them in stock. And the individual will come in, tell us where they're going. We find out through a program we have which shots they need. They pay upfront. We order them, and they come in and receive them.
You pay for it.
And Scott, just for the record, we're not giving COVID shots away for free either.
That's right.
I mean, we're buying, we have to charge, but you have to buy the materials. And you've given more than you anticipated at budgets while you're here, saying we need more, budget more revenue to have more expense.
Yes, the travel shock clinic, we budgeted $5,000. Seven months in, we're already at $7,000. For the other CD, we budgeted 21 for the year. We're already at 25, seven years, seven months in, excuse me.
So, I'll just move to approve. That's, that clerk.
If you will, hold on one second. We have a question for Commissioner Hunt.
Sorry.
Then we'll take the motion.
Now, my question was clarified by the last two gentlemen that spoke. Thank you.
Okay. All right, additional questions? We do have a motion and a second on table. Is there right, Madam Clerk?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay. Here, no further discussion. And it is for a budget amendment in the amount of $28,000. If you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Just to say a few things, I've done something different this year where I've had a couple pre-budget meetings with the few. Departments, Mr. Merritt, Sheriff, and Scott were a couple of those. And I just wanted to tell you what a great year Scott and the Health Department have. We reviewed his numbers with him. All his programs seem to be performing really well, but All his programs seem to be performing really well, but most importantly is the animal shelter. And you heard a presentation back, I don't know, December or January, but seeing the numbers, what we're doing, getting ready to start a capital project here in a couple of weeks to really take the surgical suite to the next level, Scott, some of the things that need to be done. So I want to, want to say kudos to you and your team on that. Second, Scott, in your clinics that you have, your adult and child clinics that are wrapped under the FQHC, we're getting ready to start the expansion in March for have a lot to add in, additional adult and child space there, along with the VA component. But you have, one of the things I thought that was neat was you've been able to really keep your patient count where you needed to be to continue to be in FQHC.
Yes.
And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that's 4,700 patients between the two clinics that you have to keep to show the need for that. And I just wanted to commend you on that and hard work you guys put in retaining the patients.
Yeah, with DSS continually signing up the adult Medicaid population, I think that we should by 2025 hope to be at 6,000 patients, and I think that's very realistic for us.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Item eight is recreation and parks. We have with us Mr. Mark Seymour.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here today.
Welcome, welcome. I know you did it, be proud. Standing at that podium some years ago.
Well, I'm actually here today to talk about the Harold Bate Foundation. Harold Bate Foundation's been good to us over the years. In 2024, our department has received a total of $78,000 in Harold Bate Foundation grant awards. The first grant award was an amount of $43,000. Thirty-three thousand, $30,000 of this was to go to the West Craven Park Playground, it's just finished up, and the other 13,000 was to go to the youth league funding throughout the county. The second grant is for the amount of $35,000. That was received to assist the playground replacement project at Creekside Park, which will be starting here in the next couple of months. We are requesting the acceptance of the $78,000 from the Bate Foundation. Of that, $65,000 has already been matched with projects in fiscal year 2024. We are requesting a $13,000 grant match for our youth league funding.
All right, any questions for Mr. Seymour before we entertain a motion? All right, here none. What's your desire, the board?
Some move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept Harold Bate Foundation grant funds in the amount of 65,000, and then to approve the request for a $13,000 match for the youth league funding. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just want to say congrats. Good job.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited about it. We've got projects going on throughout, and we'll try to help everybody else.
Any other questions, comments? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioners Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks a bunch.
Commissioners, if it would be all right with you, Sheriff, I think you're going to be with us a few minutes. I think you've got to help us out and some other things today. If it'd be all right with you and the Commissioners, I'd like to go ahead and ask that we would go to item 10, solid waste. Any concerns with that, Mr. County Attorney?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, you okay with it? All right, we'll go ahead and invite you to the front. This is the approval of the Monet Convenience Center lease, and then we do have some other things in here. Good morning, Mr. Astor.
Good morning, Chairman. Thank you for having me today. I have a couple items, like you said, for you all, for us consideration this morning. The first one of which is the Monet Convenience Center lease extension. This agreement was set to expire, or is set to expire on June 30, 2024. The Craven County Solid Waste Department is working in conjunction with the Craven County management team here to negotiate a five-year extension with Ms. Sharon Monet. If approved, the proposed negotiated extension will expire on June 30, 2029. And with this extension, the Craven County will continue to operate the convenience centers located at 4,003 Old Cherry Point Road, under the same terms as the current lease.
Okay. Commissioners, you got any questions or comments? I do want to commend staff, also Vice Chair Booker and staff. They've been researching this for some time and trying to figure out the right direction for us to go. And you got any comments?
No, I, I, it's, it's a necessity that we go ahead and do this extension, even though it would be advisable, if we could, would be to move it to a larger facility in, in that area, but we've been unable to come up with.
We've tried.
We've been trying, unable to come up with something that works. So we're gonna, we're gonna have to do five more years where we are.
Okay, any other comments?
I spent a good deal of time at that convenience site two years ago. It's absolutely amazing, the number of people, trucks, equipment, that, the activity that happens in that small space. Whoever's running that does a phenomenal job for, with a very tight area, and no one was hurt. So I was just amazed. They're doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right, here no additional comments?
I was going to say, congrats on maintaining the price for five years. That's good negotiation. That's hard to do. Vice Chairman and staff.
Yes.
I didn't know anything to do with it. The staff did it. Stephen did it.
All right, so the request is to approve the lease extension agreement for five-year term. Do you have a motion?
Take a motion, don't we?
All right, I have a motion from Ms. Beal, a second from Commissioner Mark. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed, all right? And then B, item B, the renewal of the contracts.
Yes, sir, thank you. Item B is the renewal of our three solid waste contracts. As you know, Craven County Solid Waste Department manages several contracts to provide solid waste and recycling services to Craven County residents. These contracts provide hauling services for the seven convenience centers and residential curbside trash room collection services throughout the county. The three contracts have, all have expiration dates of June 30, 2024, and are currently due for renewal. Of the three contracts, I'm showing the convenience center hauling agreement, the solid waste franchise agreement, which is the trash stickers, our recyclable, curbside recyclable exclusive franchise agreement, which is what we went back to in 2018. And through this renewal with GFL Environmental, Craven County is securing the rates of the, that were negotiated prior, in the prior years with an additional five years. Additionally to that, these renewals provide a uniform CPI, Consumer Price Index cap of 7% in all three contracts. And it also removes what was called a recyclable processing fee from the hauling agreement, which is essentially the cost that we were paying to transport the recyclable material. Attached to this items, attached to this item are the copies of the amendment and the extension agreements for each individual contract, followed by the original agreements as well at your disposal. Staff and members of GFL are available for any questions if you may have so.
Okay. Mr. County Manager, you got any comments you want to make first?
I, I think Stephen did a great job there. I met with GFL a month or so ago. We had a good talk. One thing Stephen did say, and I think is important is, when we bid this out the last time to establish these three contracts under this term, it was pre-COVID, pre-inflation, pre the world changing. So the pricing that you got in 19 is very good. A cap in the CPI of 7%, obviously, if the economy gets worse, the most you're going to pay is a 7% increase each year. And I think, most importantly, removing the recyclable processing fee is about $50,000 roughly a year, so over the five-year terms, you have $300,000 that we won't spend on that. I appreciate the good faith that GFL negotiated with us on. Obviously, there's a dynamic in the market that we can spend hours and hours talking about, but they are the provider for Eastern Carolina, particularly in this region. Obviously, we continue to work with them on challenges we have. It's a, it's a big job to do what they do every week. We've grown into the new recycling program. Obviously, you know, people were accustomed to once a week. Five years ago, we made that change to once a month. I think it's finally getting its wheels under, and I think people are adjusting. Our volumes are increasing on that. So really, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say. I think it's, it's the right move to make.
All right, questions, Vice Chair Booker?
Just to clarify that, 7% is an annual.
CPI, yes.
CPI, so it could be 7% one year and then 7% the next year, theoretically, worst case.
And remarkably, over time, you know, it, it really depends on inflation, but I mean, I've seen it be a negative number before, meaning the contracts were due, right?
Not recently.
Not in a long time. But, yeah, it's on my age a little bit.
That's all. All right, additional questions?
I would just like to thank Stephen for the work he did. In District One, we had an area where people didn't know if their garbage was going to be picked up on a Monday or a Tuesday or a Wednesday. And he got down and solved the problem. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Additional questions, comments? The, the only question I had, and I tried to read through all our documentation, you know, and it may have said it in there. And, and we are sympathetic to the situations that have occurred recently. We all know that I got equipment, and I know it breaks down, and, and you can't forecast when it's going to do that. And a lot of this has happened during the holiday season also. I, I think, though, i- if this is possible, there may be already something standing that you have in place. We just need to make sure that we can share it with our citizens more. But, so let's say my respect, recyclables are supposed to be picked up today, and for some reason they're not because of, you know, trucks down or whatever it may be. Is it a pretty much known fact that if they don't pick it up today, that it will be picked up tomorrow? And this is what I'm trying to get at, is, you know, we got a lot of folks, you know, we're picking up recyclables one time a month. Folks don't know whether to get the can, carry it back to the house, carry it back in the morning. So we need some kind of, you know, I mean, I, I don't know if it's possible, but I'm looking for something that we can relay to citizens to say, if it's not picked up today, when are they to expect it to be picked up? Can anybody answer that?
Of course. The golden rule is always leave it out until it's serviced, okay? And we push on all of our trash stickers, on the can, on the recycle can, all of our flyer material, it's our phone number. And again, the polymorphic system that's going to come out is going to help with that, with that outreach as well. But give us a call if, if you think, if you put your can out and you don't see any of your neighbors that have put their can out, usually that's an indication you may have the wrong date, maybe not. But give us a call. My team in the solid waste department does a real good job. We talked to several residents in the county several times a day, and, and we've seen it all, and, and, but the golden, to answer your question, the golden rule is to leave it out until it's serviced. A GFL team does a good job if they stop service. They'll notify me. Sometimes it's after hours, so we have to get that down. But they will start before, you know, if they, in your area, if they stop on one road the next morning, the following morning, first thing, they'll pick back up on that road. Unless there is, like we've seen in the previous weeks, catastrophic events of breakdowns, equipment malfunctions. And I think we, we hit, like you alluded to, I think we hit a situation there where we were a day behind for the holidays, then we had several trucks break down. I'd say we, GFL had some several trucks break down, put us further behind. And, and I've seen it firsthand, they were out there picking up recycling pickup trucks, full-time guys out there picking up trucks and pickup trucks. So they're doing everything we can. We did run into a little few bumps in the road. They've assured us that they've gotten that resolved with a few extra backup vehicles that were transported in from other, other branches. So hopefully, we won't see that any, anymore going forward, but you are correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, just to expand on that, anybody that's been in business understands things break, understand things break down. Drivers don't show up. All, I'm sure that they could tell us a lot of stories that would be interesting. We won't get into that, but it appears to me that we probably now have a bunch of trucks that are five years older than they were when we signed this contract five years ago, which means they're going to break down more. And it would seem to me that in this agreement, there ought to be a requirement for X number of backup vehicles. A truck breaks down, we pull another truck out of the backyard and send it out. I know that may not always work, but if, if we need 10 trucks to do the servicing, and, and that's just a number, might be two, I don't know, it might be 20. We ought to have, we ought to require that they have X number of backup trucks, whether it's 10% or whatever, not have to use a pickup truck to go pick up that trash or that recyclable. Just a, just a thought, comment, up to you.
There, there is some language in there, but unfortunately, like I said, we're, we were in a position where our backup trucks are breaking down, just as fast as our newer trucks are breaking down. And Norma's here, if she would like to come up and elaborate on giving you the, the certainty of, of their situation with their fleet.
Good morning, Ms. Norma.
Good morning. I'm Norma Yanez. I'm the Government Contracts Manager for GFL. It was like a perfect storm over the holiday, when the landfill closes and we're pushed back another day in the first place. And then everybody has extra trash out for Thanksgiving and Christmas, and we did have some unusual things, and everybody saw the truck running into the bridge. So that was one that was out. And then, and then our backup trucks broke down as well. We were doing everything we could to make sure we picked up on time. We were sending out shifts on double, trucks on double shifts, you know, have one driver come in early and then work his hours, and we were having another one stay out as late as he could. So I think we did as well as we could. We, since then, we've gotten in two extra, we normally have two extra backup trucks, but everything just happened so funny, funny at the time. But since then, we've gotten two more backup trucks from another branch. And our trucks not, are not necessarily, the fleet is not necessarily that old, because we move trucks in and out all the time, so it's not necessarily the trucks that we started with five years ago. And we're, we're scheduled to get a few more late-model trucks in this, at the end of the summer to replace some of the older trucks as well. And we're getting the truck that had the wreck, we're getting a new body to go in the chassis, so that'll be back in service as soon as that's done. So we're, we're working on it. We've got a lot of things going on, moving pieces, but normally, yes, we do have backup trucks as a, as a norm. You can't operate like we operate without having backup trucks.
Any questions?
I'll just say thank you, and nobody remembers the 359 days you do a good job, but the other, it's the five or six that I was getting the same phone calls probably that the rest of Commissioners text message, phone calls, emails, because people did get, it was, it was a frustration, but I have to remind myself, there's 359 days that you guys are doing just fine. It's just that there was some big hiccups this year, so hopefully we don't see many of, more of those. But thank you guys for doing a good job on the other 350-something days.
Well, thank you very much. All right, answer anything else? Anything else from Ms. Norma? Thank y'all. All right. All right, any additional questions for Mr. Astor? All right, so County Manager, go through us, with us here, what the board action, we see it there, but we want to make sure that we tend to it and, as we should, Mr. County Attorney, whichever one.
All right, so the board action is to approve the amendment and extension agreements for the convenience center hauling agreement, the solid waste franchise agreement, and the recyclable materials collection exclusive franchise agreement.
All right, so that's all the motion has to read.
That you got to do.
All right, Commissioners, what's your desire?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. You heard the, the motion that was read by the County Manager. Is there any additional questions, discussion from the board? Here none, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. Thank you all for being here this morning. Sorry you had to wait a little while, but thank you. Appreciate it.
It's not every day you get to see Stephen in a tie, so we wanted to say, want to let it linger for a little while.
All right. We'll go back to our Sheriff. Thank you for your, working with us a minute. I wanted, I know these folks needed to get out and go back to their daily business. Good morning to you, Sheriff.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for seeing me this morning. Come before you today, it seems like a lot of the conversations we're having is about opioid overdoses, drugs and whatever that have plagued our county, all 100 counties in the state. And we're continuing, continuously looking at the way we address these problems, and namely from an enforcement standpoint, which is what our office main function is. And when we find something that works well, we, we grow on it and try to grow the program. One is the canine program. Since we brought it together in 2019, we have had a huge success. The amount of dosage units, which a dosage unit in our world equates to a life saved. Dosage units of dangerous narcotics that these dogs have been directly responsible bringing off the streets has been tremendous. And we look to grow on that. Once in a while, not often, we have an opportunity to get a resource, a dog in this case, that is trained, certified, ready to go. No upfront cost, no cost to the county. We've got the equipment needed. I'm asking to grow the unit by one canine. This is going to be a multipurpose dog that's ready to go and ready to hit the streets. The amount of calls for service that we have received from our local municipalities who don't have canines, and even those that do, as well as surrounding counties that don't have a canine program, has been tremendous. We've also got requests from the federal government as well, State Port, Airport, UPS, FedEx, and U.S. Postal Service, all of which we continue to service. And many of our narcotics now are coming into this county by way of mail. So this is another aspect that we're having to address, and what we currently have, we can't do that without bringing a dog off the streets, and we, we can't afford to do that. So I'm asking today that y'all revisit our policy in regards to a total of seven dogs and increase it to eight. And our County Manager, Jack, and I have worked on this and come up with some thoughts on how, you know, we manage this together. Because it is, it's our program. It's not just a sheriff's program. It's, it's a county program. So we want to grow it responsibly, but we feel like this is the time when we need to move forward, because we do have a resource that is available to us at no cost. And I'm asking that y'all take that into consideration and improve the increase of one canine position, or increase by one canine position to a total of eight.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Mark?
Number one, you have seven dogs right now.
Yes, sir.
This is eight. What's the maximum number of dogs we'll go to?
You know, Commissioner Mark, that is hard to say. Five years ago, I would have thought we had enough. We are facing challenges that we never have from a public safety standpoint. I never thought we would be having as many overdoses and a fentanyl problem like we have right now. And I hate to go back to the southern border, but when it takes fentanyl about two days to get here from the southern border, we're having to deal with it. So we constantly have to change with the way the criminals and these drug traffickers are operating. And, and right now, I'll just tell you, it's overwhelming. It is.
How many of these, as far as districts, you've got seven districts, is there a dog assigned to each district?
Not necessarily a district. They're assigned to a shift, but the dogs work the entire county.
Well, he's for a position, okay? You had, you have a problem with mental, people coming from the hospital where you have to have one of your jurors take that person up to an hour and a half away?
If we're lucky, an hour and a half.
Well, let's say it's an hour and a half there, and then it's an hour and a half back, and there's time they wait. It would seem to me that we would need a person in that rather than a new, another dog and another, and it's another person.
Yeah, we do. We need additional transport deputies as well. Yes, sir.
Well, that, this, that's what I'm saying. Which is more important right now? Would an additional transport person be more available and cost less money than what we go, go ahead with another dog?
Well, I would say since, one, the opioid epidemic has taken more lives in this county than nearly anything else, that, that's going to be a priority for my office right now.
I'm sure other counties have an opioid problem. I realize that the USA had 100,000 cases last year. I'm not sure the number of cases in Craven County right now.
Opioid overdoses? There were some statistics we shared about a, when we ran out of the convention, I think we had, Sheriff, help me, 83 overdoses was the last year.
Resulted in deaths.
Deaths, 83 deaths and 300.
273.
273 overdoses didn't result in death last year, that we know about.
That were documented.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, again, we're probably only catching small percentage of what's actually happening.
What kind of increase is that from the previous year and?
Deaths, deaths pretty significant. I can't exactly quote that. Overdoses.
Overdoses were down, deaths were up.
Yeah. Which is, I mean, a direct reflection of fentanyl.
Correct.
In the drug supply.
And when we get to the hospital, the number of mental patients that you're transporting, what are we transporting there a week?
It varies, Commissioner. It varies, and it also varies where, where they go. There could be, very rarely is there a week when there's a light transport traffic. I have three transport officers and road deputies fill in when needed.
The only point that I'm trying to make here is that it seems to me we need somebody to handle these mental cases that you have to take off from one of the districts. Then go ahead right now with another dog.
All right. Additional comments? We'll, Commissioner Mitchell, then we'll go to, we'll go to Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Mitchell first.
This is a question for clarification. I know that you have the opportunity to, to acquire a fully trained dog without having to add additional cost into, into the, the facilities that the dog will require. Are you increasing by one dog or one canine position? In other words, my question is, when this canine is eventually retired, are you going to look for another canine to fill this position? Is this a regular deputy with a dog, or is this a canine deputy?
This is a regular deputy with a dog.
Okay. So, so when this, so the increase to eight is a temporary increase?
Yes, ma'am.
At this point?
At this point, it is. And which is some.
I'm not saying that there's not a need. I guess I'm asking, is, is this a permanent or a temporary?
It's an opportunity that has presented itself to the office, so it would be a temporary. And that's something the County Manager and I talked about when I went to him with this, is that, you know, we look at this thing annually, biannually, however we need to, and look, you know, are we making a difference? Do we have enough resources? That sort of thing. So it's something we, we are tracking. And right now, I would just say, given the opportunity, we have a huge need, and this has presented itself.
So Jack, we're not, we're not adding a position at this point, we're just removing a cap.
Yeah. So the Sheriff did a, a good job there. Let me, let me try to articulate it a little differently. So he has a vacant deputy position now, where an individual is already a canine handler with a, with a canine. He would fill that position, so the position's established, but your policy limits his ability to have more than seven canines. So he would need to create an eighth slot to be able to hire this deputy who has a canine to come on board. I'm assuming that's probably a, a big showstopper for that deputy. I mean, obviously, he's got an investment there. So the Sheriff and I talked, you know, there's a couple ways to do it. Number one, you could just carte blanche, say the program's eight, right? Eight dogs. Or it could be a temporary lift of the cap to eight, and when a dog, you know, retires, leaves service, whatever that may be, the Sheriff and I would have a discussion on whether or not that dog needs to be replaced. That was what he's alluding to. We would periodically update the program. So you're lifting it temporarily, but it's not a permanent lift. I mean, if that dog leaves, there's discussion happens before we just go out and get an eighth dog.
Chairman, can I move to temporarily remove the cap?
Well, if you will, I had to ask, Commissioner Smith had a question, then we could go back to you.
My question is twofold. First is the, what is the possibility of finding a deputy without a dog? And the second part of that is, what, I know you said the dog is already trained, there's no cost in training, but for the keeping and care of the dog once you have it, what is the cost there? Because that would be additional costs that would be not in the budget. We'll budget it for the, the deputy, but not for that dog. Is that correct?
So the first question was in regards to just finding a deputy.
Right.
It's extremely difficult right now. It is. Retention and recruiting is difficult. All sheriffs, all law enforcement agencies are going through the same thing in regards to just trying to find good qualified people that will come to work and want to stay, not just looking for a job, but want to stay. In fact, that they meet all the qualifications, because we're not willing to lower our qualifications just to put a warm body. Second, I believe, is the upkeep of the dog once we got it. It would be the normal food, medical, and we do just about all of the training in-house. Once in a while, they do travel out of district to train, but the, the expense is minimal. And we need it put on the county's insurance policy, because I don't have a policy at the Sheriff's Office.
So what is a guess of it, or that, that cost?
If I had to guess, ma'am, I would say for the remainder of this budget year, I, I would say $1,500 if I had to put a, if I had to put a number.
Okay. Before we entertain Commissioner Howard's motion, do we have another question?
I do. It's kind of a sidestep thing, since it was brought up. The veterinarian for your dogs in the Sheriff's Office, do, does Dr. Oster take care of them? Or do we have a private veterinarian taking care of them?
So a little bit of both. It depends on what the, you know, if one of them has to have a canine removed or something that the doctor can't do at hers, but as far as routine maintenance, if you will. Yeah. They, they certainly have been very helpful.
Okay. Any additional questions? All right, we go back to you, Commissioner Howard.
And my motion is just to remove the cap, not, not necessarily create a new position, just remove the cap from seven to eight, so this new deputy can fill a position that already exists.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to?
To probably remove the cap to eight dogs.
Yes, to eight. From seven to eight.
Okay. You can include that in your motion, is?
I have a question before you.
Yes.
It's okay with your second?
Correct.
All right, discussion, Commissioner Smith.
Is that a temporary?
Yes. Yeah, that, that's part of the motion.
Man, I think it's.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm just trying to understand, are we changing the policy? Am I, do I need to update the policy?
No. It's a temporarily adjusting the cap within the policy to eight. But when an animal leaves service, the policy would still be seven.
Okay, everybody understand?
Got it.
All right. Any additional questions? All right, you do have the motion, and you have the second. Here are no additional discussion, Madam Clerk. When you get a chance, I'll let you call the robe.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Sheriff, why are you here? Got any updates for us, or anything? I know you've got a lot going on.
We do, we do. Once back, I can go back to our drug activity. Our narcotics unit, our special investigative bureau has been doing an outstanding job. We have removed some major players off the streets of Craven County in eastern North Carolina. They've done an outstanding job. They work tirelessly and are very dedicated, and it is making a huge difference in these folks that we are sending away that none of us will see in the remainder of our lifetime because of their actions in this county. Do you have a big concern that this stuff obviously has made its way into our school? We continue to see overdoses in our high schools and at some middle schools as a result of vaping. As you know, I've got a very aggressive program going on now that are targeting some of the vape and tobacco shops that are marketing these poisons toward our children, and we are doing a very good job of holding them accountable for their actions. And we will continue to do that, and that's a partnership with myself and many other agencies. And that trend we are starting to see, that is, what we're doing here is moving its way across North Carolina, going after these shops that are just selling to anybody. I mean, just last week, I got a complaint of a, what they call CBD, which actually it's marijuana is what it is, is being sold to, was sold to a 14-year-old. And the parent, rightfully so, was very outraged. So we have adopted that case from the Vanceboro Police Department and are working that, and the store owners will be held accountable for that.
Any questions for the Sheriff?
I have a question.
Commissioner?
Sheriff, could you tell us about what you're doing to be proactive in teaching our children not to even start? Can you talk about the DARE programs, where you're at with that, please?
Yeah. So obviously, our SRO Bureau is in charge of the DARE program, doing a fantastic job. I mean, if you have not gone to a, a DARE graduation, I really ask that you would. We, we have them throughout the year at all of our schools, especially the elementary and middle schools. We're growing this into the high school as well. The number of DARE instructors we've got now are double what they were four years ago, and we're going to continue to grow that. So over half of our SROs will be certified DARE instructors. And it's a, a pretty difficult certification to get, but we're making a huge difference. And a lot of it is about making good life decisions. They are focusing a lot on these vapes and what's, what's taking place and how easily accessible they are. But that's, that's our main focus with the DARE folks is, one, educating these kids on not only good life choices, but what these poisons can mean for them. Just because on the container it says Skittle, or Girl Scout cookies, or fruity pebbles, cereal bar, if it's coming from one of these shops, it's not a cereal bar. It's, it's loaded with THC, it's dangerous, and all of these products are coming back hot, meaning the THC levels are well above the legal limit. So these are something that our parents need to be made aware of. If they see something like this, take the time to pick it up and read it. It's going to be in fine print, but it's going to have the THC in there that's the active ingredient. And we don't need 12, 13, 14-year-olds ingesting this stuff. A serving size of one cookie is about half a bite, not the entire cookie. And I know myself, if I'm going to sit down with cookies, I'm going to eat a bunch of them. Will these children think the same thing? So they take this big cookie to school, they share it with friends, then we've got multiple kids going to urgent care because of them passing out. So it's an ongoing problem. We're doing it from an educational standpoint and the enforcement standpoint. Commissioner, you've been on a couple of these visits we've done with the vape shops. Our job is to make it very difficult for them to operate, and if they're going to operate in this county, they're going to need to do it correctly.
All right. Vice Chair Booker.
Sheriff, Sheriff, I know these, this is not related necessarily to any of this discussion other than the dogs. I, I've seen the demonstration and how effective these dogs can be when you have a traffic stop and you, deputy doesn't know if their drugs are in, but he suspects or she suspects. Can they detect meth? Is that, is that detectable?
Yes, sir.
It is? So it's not just marijuana, or heroin, or?
It's a number of different controlled substances that they, they detect.
Okay.
Yeah. And they detect it. They detect the odor. That's one of the things they're trained on. They can't tell us exactly which one it is. Other than either it's been there in the, in the very recent past, or it's there right now, and a lot of times they can pinpoint in the vehicle, house, package, where exactly.
Where it is. Okay. Thank you.
And these are things that we are not going to be able to smell as human.
Because I understand that meth is becoming a bigger and bigger problem.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yep.
It is.
All right. Additional questions from the board? All right. Sheriff, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Appreciate you being here this morning.
Thank you very much.
All right. Commissioners, we're going to handle item 11, and then we're going to take about a five-minute recess. At this time, we asked our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Hodges, if people would come forward about facilities. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. I'm going to try to be unusually brief, because I'm usually not when I get up here. As Craven County is aware, we have been working on a renovation project for the New Bern branch of the Craven Pamlico Library System. We've been successfully worked with our General Assembly delegation to get a $1 million included in the state budget as a direct grant to Craven County for capital improvements for this project. Since the budget's been approved, we've been working with the Budget Office to develop the proper scope for this project. the proper scope for this project. We're down to one word that they don't like in the scope we provided, so we're getting that resolved. But the Finance Department felt that we were far enough along that we could bring this budget amendment forward to go ahead and budget the $1 million from the state, whereas we've got to place some orders for some items that have a longer lead time right now. So, right now, the board's being asked to approve a budget amendment to accept the grant funding from the state and allow us to commence with this project, start issuing some contracts, purchase orders.
So moved. All right, we have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment, the amount of $1 million, and authorize staff to move forward with the registration project for the New Bern branch. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe. Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Jean. All right, Commissioners, we're going to take about a five-minute, and we'll come back. Commissioners, we'll come back to order. Item 12 of your agenda packets is appointments. You have before you pending, current, and upcoming. Are there any nominations for any pending? Here none. We will move next to current. We have two before us there. The first one is for the Local Emergency Planning Committee, and we have the applicant of Mr. Jonathan Gaskins, who seeks to fill a City of New Bern seat for EM Emergency Management, what's desired of the board. I would ask that we would appoint Mr. Gaskins. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none. We were set by acclamation. Next, you have Eastern Carolina Workforce Development. You have a gentleman there who has vacated his seat. His term's not ending until July of 2025. You have two applicants before you to fill the vacancy, what's desired of the board?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Leslie Hunter to fill this vacancy.
All right, we have a nomination of Ms. Hunter. Are there additional nominations? Here none. We will set Ms. Hunter by acclamation. All right, Commissioners, you see the upcoming terms expiring. Please take note of that. Any other appointments that need to be considered? All right, here none. Next item, we will go to the County Attorney's Report. Mr. Grady. Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I have three items for your consideration this morning. All three deal with county-owned surplus property acquired through the tax foreclosure process, and all three parcels are owned jointly with the City of New Bern, who's already given its approval on these transactions. The first one is located at 1127 H Street with a parcel ID number of 8006006. This is a final approval. The original bid of $3,900 is your final bid. We recommend approval of that bid. The original taxes, past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were $10,500, and the tax value of the property is $7,800.
All right, what's desired of the board?
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving conveyance after the expiration of said bid period for parcel 8-006-006. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, and Dee?
Yes, sir. The next parcel also has a mailing address of 1127 H Street, but it is a separate parcel with a parcel ID number of 8-006-5000. The initial bid, which is also your final bid, was $3,900. The original past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were $35,523.53, and the tax value of the property is $7,800. This is on for a final approval, and I would suggest the board consider giving it.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving conveyance for parcel 8-006-5000. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, and then...
And the third? Yes, sir. The third and final parcel is 1022 K Street with a parcel ID number of 8-006-045. This is on for a final approval as well. The initial bid was $2,700. That is also your final bid. The original past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were $5,599.31, and the tax value of this property is $5,400. Recommend that the board consider giving final approval to this one as well.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving conveyance for parcel number 8-006-045. Any additional discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, County Managers' Report.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for opportunity. I wanted to do a little calendar gymnastics with you this morning on two events that are upcoming. One of them is tomorrow. Just put on your calendar, there will be an announcement at the airport at 11:30 a.m. I would hope that all the Commissioners could attend. It's on the airport parking, the short-term parking, in or through the terminal, and there'll be folks there to greet you and take you where you need to be. So just make sure...
11?
11:30. But I would be there a little early, sir, because it's going to start at 11:30. So maybe get there, actually getting there at 11 would be a good idea. If anybody would like to ride together, of course, we always leave from here and be happy to carpool. Second, working with the chairman after our last meeting, we are due for a work session. We typically have one in the spring before budget, and tentatively, right now, we would plan on having that on March 18. As many of you are aware, have been through these before, we have our normal Commissioner meeting at 8:30. We do whatever business is there, and then we have a second session where we bring the tables in and come down to the floor and work. And those usually last anywhere three to five hours, depending on the subjects. In particular, this time, I know we're going to have your budget update. Jean's going to give you a facility update on all the projects he's got going on. We're going to have the architect and engineer here who's doing your site plan, master planning next door on the Sudan property. So we know those three right there is a couple hours. So if would, is it, like to know today if there's any conflicts with that, say, between 10 and 2 that day? If not, then we'll go and tentatively schedule it and work toward getting that done.
Commissioners, everybody's calendar looked good on that.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right.
Very good. All right, thank you for that. So just some updates. Last week was a very busy week. There was a lot going on. It was a really great week, too, and I won't steal any Commissioner Thunder, but I thoroughly enjoyed the tour of the base we had last week. Folks here, Captain Belmont, Captain Birdy, that did a great job this morning. I mean, they took us all around and gave us the brief down there. We got to see FRC. We got to meet with Colonel Burks, and I want to thank he and Rhonda for their hospitality. It was a great tour, a lot of moving pieces. There is a second tour this summer, probably June, where we'll go back and be able to see more of the aircraft and the operational side. There was something that kind of influenced our ability not to do that on this tour. So there will be a second opportunity, and I hope all Commissioners can attend that as well. Commissioner Mark and I attended a Highway 70 meeting last week in Kinston. Great meeting. I was pleased to hear, and of course, still Commissioner Mark's thunder, but there's a lot of progress being made on the Kinston bypass, which is the last key component that hasn't been resolved for I-42 and getting that to be an interstate. The way I understood it, and I probably don't understand it well, is there's one signature they're waiting on. They get that one signature, then they can move forward with some of the enhanced design and environmental work that goes on. But as I've told people, if you can't figure out the Kinston problem, then we can't figure out the I-42 problem, because without that, we still have an interstate going into, you know, eight stoplights and a two-lane road in places. So I was really encouraged by that, and we'll provide information to the board as it becomes available. And lastly, Commissioner Smith and I attended a Dick Center meeting last week. I was surprised that our numbers had gone up to about 15% from eight month over month. As I approached the board the last time, I was concerned that our numbers were going down. I don't know if 15% is the right number. It still seems low to me. I think 20 or 25 would be better. There were diversions from the emergency room, and there were diversions from, I believe it was one from law enforcement that was able to get someone there. There is a challenge, and how it will be resolved, we don't know yet, but Commissioner Smith will speak on it, I'm sure, during her report, is that if everyone doesn't agree to be in the Dick Center next year, then the Dick Center may not be able to exist. So that part has to be figured out. There was some discussion about options before the meeting on what that would be. That's not related to a Craven County discussion, because as I shared with them, we look at it at budget. It has to make sense, right? What we expend versus what we're getting. So we've made no decision, and won't probably until May. But there may be another entity that may be thinking a little bit harder about that right now. So we're going to see how that plays out. Obviously, they talked about going to the state for special appropriations, going back to Trillium for more money. So there's lots of things on the table, but just wanted to make you aware of that conversation. Ms. Chairman, with that said, that's all I have.
All right, questions for the County Manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners' Report. Who'd like to begin today?
I'll start.
Commissioner Mark?
Jack did a good job in reporting Highway 70, but I agree with him that it was a great meeting, and hopefully, something will come of them doing that bypass. That's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Hunt?
I have no report.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
I would probably just say ditto to what Jack said from the Dick's Oversight Committee. It seems that Craven County is one of the people that invests with high amounts of money, over $300,000, and we, our service does not reflect that. And that is something that we need to look at. They are having some problems with folk who are thinking about pulling out. We don't know what the results will be. But we have to look at the service that we are receiving from them and make a determination as to whether we want to move forward with that, continuing that work. We know that with the number of people having problems with drugs, we need to use every resource that we can find. So we are concerned that we may need to continue to work with them. And again, we had 15 people last month to receive services from that group. I think it was about 13%. But we are one of the highest-paid counties, highest-paying counties, so that causes some concern for us. On Saturday, to go to another topic on Saturday, I participated in a Black History Parade and had a great time doing that. I lost one of my name tags. If any of you come across that, I would appreciate you returning that to me. But we did have a good time, and I think that's about there. Most of what I need to talk to today, speak to today.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Howard?
Yes, sir. I have a long report, which I won't do today. I'll save it to our next meeting for my legislative conference. But I did want to mention, I did have an opportunity with Congressman Murphy, got some good information there, and I'll go into the rest of it next time. I did want to mention our Township 6 Fire Department Chief that recently passed away, Pete Braddison. He was a true hero in every sense of the word, with 22 years of dedicated service in the Marine Corps, including Vietnam, a combat veteran during Vietnam. His commitment to duty was unwavering, courage-inspired all who knew him, was a foster parent, served his community in many different ways. But Pete's heroism did not end with his military service as the chief of Township 6 Fire Department. He continued to selflessly serve his community, putting his life on the line to protect others. His leadership and professionalism were unmatched, and his impact on the department will be felt for years to come. Tragically, Pete's life was cut short by cancer, a battle he fought with the same bravery and determination that defined his military and firefighting careers. Pete will be missed by Township 6. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm out of turn here. But that was, and I've worked with him a long time, and he was a great chief. Is there any interest in taking what Commissioner Howard, developing that into a resolution and send to the family? Just out of curiosity?
I would really, I'd be very interested in that.
I'd support that.
Okay.
Well, you want to, do you want to approve it kind of pre, so we can go ahead and send it when it's done?
All right, is that a motion, Commissioner Howard?
Motion to approve a resolution.
We've got a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve a resolution honoring the life of, and say his name again?
Pete Braddison.
Pete Braddison. All right, any discussion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
I'd just like, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to follow up on what the County Manager said. The brief this morning by the commanding officer and the executive officer of Fleet Readiness Center East is part of a program that the board established a year ago, where the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of this county would receive periodic updates from the command team on Cherry Point over what developments are happening on the base, defenses, the second-largest economic impact, economic sector in North Carolina. It is our biggest employer, biggest economic impact on the county. So, and in years to come, we will be doing these periodic updates so that the citizens in the board can understand what's changing at the base, the growth, the workforce, and the new facilities, and the job operation. So this will be a continuing program.
Good. They did a great job this morning. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, I only have one quick comment to add to what Jack said. We had a great tour at Cherry Point last week, and I've been there multiple times prior, but this was the best and most complete tour, primarily because we got to see FRC East, where prior it was more the wing and the military piece. So this covered both, and it was very, very well done. I would just say to the public, most people can't just, you can't just go on base and see it. I can only say that it's far more, it's far bigger than you would ever imagine from the road. What you see from the road is next to nothing. So it was a great tour, and again, we're going to have a follow-up, so that's good news.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, Commissioner Smith?
I would also like to speak to the tour. I have been on the base prior to that visit, and it's been quite a while ago. But I think that this is the first time I've seen someone take a holistic approach, concerned with the Fleet Readiness, the military service, and the communities around, and planning. They are giving consideration, deep consideration to all of us, and the effort that they put forward to make sure that we're safe in Craven County. We don't have a word. They are doing things to make sure that we are in good standing in Craven County and in the world. They're taking a worldview, a counterview, and taking the bait.